Okay, that's it for reports. We're going to go into recognition of visitors and the hearing of people present. I'd like to take a moment to outline the guidelines for the public comment portion of our meeting. First and foremost, we value and welcome your input and feedback. We believe a collaborative relationship between our schools and the Rockford community is essential to achieving our shared goals. Public comment at the board meeting is intended to give the Rockford community an opportunity to address the board on issues in the Rockford Public Schools. At our meetings, the board and individual board members will not directly respond to comments or questions that arise during the public participation portion of the meeting. If a follow-up is needed, the superintendent will contact a speaker or additional insider to provide clarification. We ask you limit the comments to three minutes. This helps us accommodate as many speakers as possible and ensure that everyone has each opportunity to express their views. Please be respectful of your comments and refrain from using inappropriate language or engaging in personal attacks. We want to create an environment where everyone feels comfortable expressing their opinions without fear of retribution or harassment. To ensure due process and respect for individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. If you have a problem involving an individual or a specific incident, we encourage you to consider addressing it through administrative channels by contacting the superintendent's office. Furthermore, we ask that speakers express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. We encourage you to provide constructive feedback and suggestions for improvement. Your comments can help us identify areas where we can improve our schools and better serve our students and families. We thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts. We look forward to working together to ensure that our schools continue to be a source of pride for our community. Lastly, please remember that public comment at our board meetings is one way we hear feedback from the community. It is certainly not the only way. Those who prefer other means to communicate do so via email, through the district website, or by calling the superintendent's office. Thank you for that. With that said, we have 10 folks signed up to speak tonight. Our timer is ready. Up first is Cassandra Villarreal. Sorry, I...
That was very close. Because if I had a L, I would have put it there.
Yours is much nicer, so thank you for helping with that. But please go.
We don't really say it that way. You typically say it the real. And I just, before I begin, wanted to specify that I am speaking, we didn't speak about today, but about the lawsuit that was brought to the school, because otherwise this won't make sense. According to the 2021 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health, 28% of LGBTQ youth reported experiencing homelessness or housing instability at some point in their lives. Homelessness and housing instability reported at higher rates among transgender and non-binary youth at an average of 37%, compared to only 23% of cisgender queer youth. 16% of queer youth reported that they had slept away from parents or caregivers because they ran away from home, with more than half reporting that they ran away from home because of mistreatment or fear of mistreatment due to their LGBTQ identity. I am well aware that schools are a business, which means they're going to do what they can to protect themselves from a lawsuit. Nobody wants to pay out for a lawsuit, and nobody wants to admit wrongdoing. I refuse to lose sight of why we are here in the first place. Who's protecting the trans student at the center of all this? Who is stopping him from becoming one of these statistics? I was one of the queer youth who didn't know how to come out to my family. When the world defaults to heteronormativity, it's hard realizing that you don't fit in. It's scary to risk losing friends and family over bigotry and misunderstanding. It's wrong to force a child to choose between being authentic to themselves and a stable, safe home life. I'm lucky. I knew I wouldn't be kicked out of my home. I knew my parents would love me regardless. Even knowing all that, it was still hard to come out to them. I struggled with thoughts of suicide, self-harm, and major depression over my struggle to come out. My arms are a roadmap of scars of my journey to come out. I can't imagine the struggle and fear of coming out while knowing my family won't be supportive. My heart goes out to this child at the center of this lawsuit. I am now a parent, and at this point, all I know is that my son, my sweet, compassionate, energetic little boy, will have my support in every way he chooses to express himself, whether that be clothing, hairstyles, or crushes. I can't protect him from the outside world, but I can provide him a safe place at home that so many queer youth lack. He will always be safe in my arms and in my home, and he will always have somewhere to go. That is my ultimate job as a mom, and that is what I want for this trans student at the center of this lawsuit. In my eyes, all the school has done is the bare minimum. They chose to respect the chosen name and pronouns of an individual. They absolutely haven't done anything wrong in showing this teenager respect and compassion. But the real question is, what will you do now? What will you do now that this lawsuit is looming over us? I would like to see the Rockford School District stand behind the LGBTQ plus youth and parents during this lawsuit and not sweep it under the rug. I can only hope that if this is ever my son or daughter, they are offered the same basic respect and a safe place to land on their journey. I hope you will all consider this when deciding how to proceed with this lawsuit. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we'll reset the clock. We have Dr. Clara Zieden.
Zieden.
Zieden. Thank you for your help with that as well.
No worries.
Zieden.
Zieden. It means extra, by the way. Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had a nice break, great time with your beloved ones for the holidays. I will say, something unusual is spreading throughout America's schools. I was puzzled to hear about the lawsuit filed against our district, where the parents claim that their child was socially transitioned without their knowledge, that the child's questioning about her own identity was hidden from her own parents. This is simply child abuse. Child abuse always starts with a secret between a minor and an adult. Never and ever should an adult keep a secret with a minor without their parents' knowledge. So why do the counselors keep secrets from the parents? The fact that hiding from parents being a policy is not a good reason. What is body dysmorphia? It is a mental health condition where a person spends a lot of time worrying about flaws in their appearance. Did this girl have body dysmorphia? Bulimia is a body dysmorphia. So if a child has bulimia, do you hide it from the parents? Socially transitioning a minor leads to more body harm. Minors cannot even get a tattoo without the parents' approval. We need to protect our kids from child abuse. We need the schools to teach how to think and stop teaching what to think. We need to promote education, go back to basics. Educators and parents are partners, but at the end, the parent is the sole responsible party for the child. Parents across the country need to arm themselves and protect their kids. They have the right to know about their kids while being... As parents, we are losing control of our kids to the state. We need to stand up together and fight. Thank you.
Okay, up next on the list is Charles Curtis.
Good evening. I agree completely with that last statement. Represented here is a diversity of worldviews regarding gender and sexuality, but that isn't really the issue tonight. I personally stand on the side of scientific chromosomal reality that there are two and only two genders, male and female, and that every cell in our body carries with it this God-given code XX or XY. Others believe differently. I don't hold any animosity toward them. I just don't agree. For now, let's just agree to disagree, because what we do have at issue is a full-blown assault on parental rights and authority by Rockford Public Schools that has occurred with the Mead family. By the actions of RPS staff and administration behind the backs of these parents, deceiving and lying to them, as well as altering and forging documents to cover up, RPS has violated the trust of not only the Mead family, but all families whose children has been granted the sacred responsibility to educate. We can only guess how often this is occurring, since it appears there are secret policies requiring staff to hide these gender issues from parents. Studies show that affirming gender confusion in immature, impressionable children, especially by trusted adults, tends to lock in those feelings and can lead them toward a very dangerous and expensive lifestyle. It all too often results in puberty blockers, hormone therapy, chemical castration, and ultimately surgical and medical procedures, making children permanent patients requiring a lifetime of care. This is in no way affirming care, as it is called. It is child abuse. And by your actions, you become partly responsible and possibly liable. In this country, God has given parents, not you, you meaning the district, the responsibility for their children's upbringing and education, and it is parents who will have to live with the consequences and pay the bills. We know very well that what happened to the Meads would never be tolerated with your own children, to be influenced and propagandized, undermining your values behind your back. The district claims to operate transparently and respect parents' rights, but now the truth is out. Rather than being an honest educational institution focusing on academics, RPS is becoming an agent of woke propaganda, miseducating and endangering vulnerable children, creating division in families and school staff, as well as the community, and undermining your inherited goodwill and support. Come on, guys, wake up. This is nonsense. You are headed down a dark path. Change course, apologize, be honest, respect families, focus on education, not indoctrination, before the situation becomes irreparable. If I had children in the school district and it remains the same as it is now, I would pull my children out as well.
Up next is Brenda Wodarski.
I'm going to first start with a prayer. Father, we know that in ourselves we are nothing, but in you we are made complete. Our identity is found in Christ, and that is the basis of our self-worth, making us valuable and capable and worthy of service through Christ, who dwells within us. Help us not be consumed with thoughts of how the world views us, but to think soberly with good judgment, so that we do not look to the wrong source for approval or imitate that which de glorifies Christ. Through Christ Jesus, our Lord, we pray, amen. If we are trusting an institution that will lie, it is no longer an education system. When you have an education that lies, it's no longer an education system. Why are we fearing man instead of God giving authority to man? You cannot play both sides. Playing witness, stand for truth, no matter what, your brain will always be wired, as a male or a female, so is your DNA and everything else, your heart and everything inside of you. We have groomers traumatizing our kids. Queer theory is not an identity. It's an identity defined as a political stance. It's an oppositional stance to the normal, legitimate, or dominant. Traumatizing kids, the trauma bond, which is mentioned in the MDE, it's age-inappropriate books, activities, in order to traumatize them. Trauma needs resolution. Story hour, alternate mode of kinship, desperately confusing individuals for lifetime medical relationships for the rest of their lives. It's the biggest form of child abuse. Broken, confused kids, which is what Mao did in China. Broken young people who will grow up to be activists, they need radical, political, anti-normal. Gender identity is a cult grooming term used to destroy kids. Feelings don't matter. Why do we ignore the most important book to humanity? Stand against sin or ignore it. The most important book to humanity is the Bible. I did write a letter, and I'm writing to express deep concerns about the recent lawsuits and the apparent undermining of parental rights within the education system. Education is a cornerstone of our society, and it is disheartening to witness a shift from an objective education system to what some perceive as an indoctrination system. The recent legal actions highlight the growing tensions between parents and educational institutions. It is important to ensure that transparency and open communication with parents is maintained. It is disconcerting to hear headline news or lack of disclosure which erodes the trust that parents place in the education system. Parents have a fundamental right to be involved in their child's education and have a say in their values and beliefs instilled in them during their formative years. A healthy education system should encourage open dialogue between educators and parents, fostering an environment where different perspectives can be respectfully considered. The shift towards indoctrination rather than education is troubling. Our education system should prioritize critical thinking, open-mindedness, and a balanced presentation of information. It is essential that students are given the tools to think independently. Thank you.
Okay, up next is, we'll reset the clock. Craig Ladyman.
Sad to sing a song tonight. There's something happening here. What it is ain't exactly clear. There's a man with a gavel over there telling me I got to beware. Think it's time we stop children. What's that sound? Everybody look, what's going down? Now there's bad lines being drawn. Nobody's right if everybody's wrong. Woke teachers speak in their mind, teaching kids to have sex in the behind. We gotta stop children. What's that sound? Everybody look, what's going down? And what exactly is going down? What in the wide, wide world of woke is going on here? Well, I got another little song for you. It's a show tune for all of you. It's an overthrow. Welcome to the communist overthrow. It was started almost four years ago by George Floyd, don't you know? It's the communist corporate overthrow. So I understand, too. It's my first woke communist overthrow, and we're all just kind of going through this the first time. So how did it happen? What went down? Well, I got a little reggae song that will help everybody understand what exactly went down. I caught the sheriff kneeling down to the BLM. Ooh, ooh, ooh. Yeah, I caught the sheriff, and you know that stuff is treason. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I caught, I caught the sheriff, June 3rd, 2020, in the downtown, in front of the Grand Rapids police station, is where her knee hit the ground. And I said, "I caught the sheriff kneeling down with the deputies." Oh, oh, yeah.
Are you serious right now?
I caught the sheriff, and that's where we lost all our liberties. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if you do, you have proof. You bring receipts. Figured I'd entertain you folks tonight. If you go to the KSA document that was typed up on June 5th of 2020, two days after the kneel-down, you got basically all 21 public school boards to go ahead and sign on to an unwavering commitment of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. There were some negotiations that go down. When you have 21 of these signatures, plus the Grand Rapids Diocese and Grand Rapids Public Schools, there was offer and acceptance. This isn't done for free. What this is, is fraud. It's an overthrow, and it's conspiracy on all 21 of these public school boards.
Hello again. Not sure if you remember me from August. I said I wasn't going to go away. Felt like my demographic was not being represented as a working, single mom. With first half of the school year behind us, I'd like to offer some feedback on the early releases. I expressed my biggest concern was consistency with learning environments and schedules. And I can tell you, it took eight weeks for my son to adjust. He had anxiety. He had behavior issues. The therapist in the school was contacting me, asking me if something was going on at home. The therapist then agreed, and I said he's having, you know, problems with the schedule. She said her kids were also having a hard time adjusting with the inconsistencies in the schedule. The PLC is a continuous cycle of evaluating learning, and I was told meetings on Wednesdays would allow for changes to be implemented the next day. Wednesday after winter break, I questioned what could be evaluated after two days, which ended up being one, and then Wednesday was canceled. But I got an email from this teacher stating, "I will be gone on Thursday along with the other two other second-grade teachers for curriculum professional development." I received that on Sunday, before the snow days. So there was back-to-back scheduled professional development. I'm questioning why, and if this can be done when my son is in school, why can't it be done more? Why did we go from eight to 18 early releases? This issue is actually in your control. And before you approve next year's school calendar, I ask you, please, look at days like this where it doesn't fit, because when we get back from spring break, it's the same thing. Two days, early release. We have a week and a half off. What is there to be evaluated? These kids also have a lot of changes next year. They've had pandemic, the schedule changes, and now my son has to go to a different school. And I'm hoping that I can choose what school he goes to, because we are school of choice. So I'm looking forward to seeing those guidelines, to keep him with his friends, and to make sure that he does go to middle school with his friends. Before I leave, I only have 20 seconds, of course. So I had a whole list of other parent comments. Memorial Day, bring it back. Mid-fall break, please consider it. And let the kids go to school the first week of June. Thank you.
Okay, up next is Spencer Hayes.
I am here today to speak on behalf of those that are transgender students at Rockford District and that live in Rockford. I am all of these. And I have an entire speech written out that isn't worth it. I was one of those students that started transitioning at 14. The difference is, is that I had support. I had support in my school, and I had support in my family. I stopped transitioning because of people that harmed me outside of my family. I spent five years miserable and hating myself before I finally decided that I needed to be me authentically. So at 20 years old, I turned that leaf around, turned the leaf over, and became myself. I am transgender. I'm happy. I'm healthy.
You're amazing.
And I agree with the school's decision to help this student and keep that confidential, because students have rights. They are people. They are not just kids.
They're minors.
They are growing and learning. They are not supposed to just fit into a mold that we decide this is what you're going to be, because that's what we wouldn't want for ourselves. We deserve to treat, we should treat them with respect, because that's what they deserve. They are young adults. Let them learn and live. Support them and educate them. School is a safe place. It should be a safe place for them to be themselves. They should not have to worry about if they go home and are themselves, that they may not have a home, that they may not have the family that they did before, because they are themselves. They should be able to go to school and be themselves and learn about who they are. They should be able to go to school and learn about the world, because the world is not just Rockford. It's not. The world is much larger, and they deserve better. So I agree with the school, and I'm sorry for those that don't.
Thank you. And up next is Amanda Curry.
Hi, I'm Amanda Curry. My husband and I have four children in the districts. There's a quote that has resonated with me lately. Silence is often misinterpreted, but never misquoted. It spoke to me because I feel like it represents a large population of families in this district, the ones that stay silent because they don't want their words to be misquoted or come across as unloving, unkind, or not inclusive of everyone. This is me included. They genuinely care for others and don't want to risk offending them, but in the effort to stay safe, silent, and not misquoted, perhaps our silence has now been misinterpreted. Our silence has communicated that we are okay with the district and the state encouraging the pride culture and all it encompasses. Some may say we are simply being supportive of the students that are exploring these lifestyles, but I would caution that in many ways we are normalizing and promoting them, including but not limited to flags that were available to staff to hang in their classrooms, books in the library, rainbow-lining at concerts, items hung on teacher bulletin boards and walls. While I love that the heart behind it is hopefully to help students who are questioning their sexuality to feel included, have we considered that simultaneously, another story is developing? A story of several other kids who feel uncomfortable seeing all of this at school and have moral concerns with these lifestyles. Kids who want to stay in a certain class and activity but have chosen not to because they don't agree with the promotion of all that pride encompasses. In specific regard to the trans lifestyle, have we considered that in all circumstances in life, kids need the adults in their life to tell them the truth, even when it's hard? They need the truth because then they know they can trust the adults. The truth is that none of us can change our biological sex to the opposite, as simply as I cannot say that my eyes are brown when they are blue, or that I'm 5'8" when I'm only 5'4". There are concrete parts of our identity that are unchangeable, and the sooner we can help students accept themselves for who they were uniquely and genetically created to be, instead of exploring the lies of our current culture, the sooner we can have more confident kids. I'm aware that in extremely rare circumstances, a person can be born intersex, but the rate at which the students are randomly deciding that they are trans is alarming and also indicates that it's more of a message of culture. If we continue this path, are we also willing to start telling our young elementary students what transitioning would mean for them as they got older? That it would require medications, altering their hormones, having surgeries to remove parts of their body? Is this part of the culture we want to build at Rockford? Telling our kids the false story that they were born into the wrong body, that they were created incorrectly, that they aren't just loved the way that they are? Could we be different? Could we go back to supporting and promoting only that which is directly related to the subject matter or extracurricular activities? Could we all let students know that they are welcome and deeply loved by adopting a One Rockford message across our district instead of all the subgroups? Imagine how uncomplicated that could be. We could say to our Rockford kids, "We are One Rockford. We treat others how we would like to be treated," and we keep saying it and putting the message in front of them until we are living it out every day.
Next on the list is Dwayne Gritter. Mr. Dwayne.
I've addressed you guys probably 30 times in the last four years. I don't really have much to say tonight, but I'm just going to look over. I've got three minutes. I'm going to use every bit of it. You guys got to use up this time and think about what you were told this evening. Every one of you got to think about this. I see you guys leave here at the end of a board meeting, and the first thing you do is enter the bar. To me, I think you ought to be thinking about what's going on with your community, not spending time down there having gay at times. Charlie Curtis, RPS staff, has violated the trust. This board is in charge of the staff and the admins here. You guys have a hell of a lot more responsibility than what you think you have. You need to take that to heart. Brenda, search your heart, she says. Pay attention to what's going on here. Rockford Public Schools is really turning. They're going down the evil road, guys. Community's seeing it. Craig Ladyman, yeah, it was funny, but I'll tell you why it was real. Rockford's become very woke, very woke. Wasn't this way 30 years ago when I was living in Belmont. Wasn't this way 15 years ago. Emily did bring up the August meeting. She's concerned about her schedule. Apparently, no one's really taken any concern about that. This board should take concern. You've got parents out here that are concerned about a schedule that stinks. You've got kids that don't know what day they're going to school, getting two and three days off in between weeks that are, what, snow days or whatever's going on? They don't know if they're coming or going. Amanda Curry, the science is misinterpreted. You've got a lot of community members here that feel the same way most of these people in this room do, and they're afraid to say anything. They're afraid that you're going to take it out on their kids in school. That's why they don't speak. Trust me, there's a lot more people out here in Rockford that are pissed off about what's going on here than what you know. I got nothing to gain or lose here, other than to bring it to you guys and make you realize. Take some time to think about it. Listen to what you've heard from these people. The majority of people here tonight are on the side of the right, and you guys are going down an evil path. It's going to catch up with you, and you're going to end up paying for it in the long run. I'll take the rest of my 18 seconds for you to think about what I just said.
Okay, up next, last on the list tonight is Sonia Henders.
I am here today on behalf of REA and RESPA. It is Board Appreciation Month, and we should show our appreciation more than just in January. But I'm here on behalf of REA and RESPA members to express our gratitude for you for the time and commitment that you put into your work on the school board. It was interesting today, I was working with a group of fifth graders at Valley View, and one particularly eloquent fifth-grade boy said to me, and I'm going to quote, we were talking about Martin Luther King Jr., by the way, and they were debating whether we should have school as a way to honor and celebrate him or not have school. And he said very fervently, "We need to treasure what MLK taught us about treating all people fairly, full stop." He said, "full stop." And it resonated with me, as your job's on a public school board, that you do this. That is part of our mission, is to take the kids and their families who show up at our doors as they are, and provide them a safe and welcoming environment, because that's what we know they need in order to learn. And on top of all of the other things that you do for our school and our district, and you do it with the hurdles that are presented to you, whether it's at the state level with funding or legislation, you do it because you know your mission is to serve the public's students and our community, and you do it well, and I thank you for it.
Last on the agenda is superintendent remarks. Dr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Fulbright. Today was not a snow day in Rockford. Some parents have asked why it was not. Many students actually...
...interruption. So with that, we have a list. Seven folks signed up to speak tonight, starting with Spencer Hayes. Spencer, line up.
I am here to speak on my experience and knowledge of transitioning and how it can benefit versus harm those who choose to transition socially younger. To socially transition means that you change your name, your appearance, appearance as well as your pronouns. It does not mean you start hormone replacement therapy or have any medical transition. It is rare for anyone to receive medical transition under the age of 18. Statistically, transgender students in general that are out to their parents only get support about one-third of the time. They are also at increased risk for depression, self-harm, and suicidal ideation and actions, which they were two to two-and-a-half times more likely to experience in comparison to their cisgender queer peers, and 7.6% or times more likely to experience compared to their cisgender heterosexual peers. This is the experience of about half of the transgender youth population. To put this in perspective, one in five transgender youth have seriously considered suicide or attempted it, not because being transgender is a mental illness, but because it's not.
It's knowing that you can see yourself in a better, healthier spot. With affirming care, you can decrease the depression by about 60% and 73% for suicidal ideation or harm or actions. This is all according to a study published in 2020 through the Journal of Adolescent Health. The increased risk comes from lack of support, lack of mental health care, from affirming mental health providers, as well as bullying, bullying not only from peers but also adults. Throwing into the current events of banning transgender-affirming healthcare, as well as transgender bathroom laws into the mix, it adds so much stress and anxiety. These adolescents are afraid for their future, and I don't blame them, because I am afraid for my future as well. In my opinion, the school did the right thing by keeping its mental health records confidential of this student. And I urge everyone to think about the student and the other students out there that are transgender and are trying to be themselves that don't have supportive parents, because their anger from the parents, it's not worth it, not worth the students' lives. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Up next is Emily Whalen.
I am back, because I didn't get to go through all of my comments from other parents regarding the early release schedules. As a recap, we went from eight to 18, and it's not just me that's coming here and voicing. So I will get right into the comments that I have here. In 2022, we had the Friday before Memorial Day off, which is a big weekend for Michigan families. We also should have a mid-fall break, as an afternoon off does not allow our kids to fully recharge, and going from August to Thanksgiving is a long time. I would take these breaks over extra early releases. Next, I wish my child could stay at school to do homework, as they have sports after school. So they come home, go back to school, and come back home, which is difficult to manage every other week, and they are told they cannot stay at school. It is a logistical headache in a household with two working parents to take time off work every other week, and serves no genuine benefit to our kids to have them in school less and less. Would much easier to manage one more full day off every month than an early release every other week. I fully support our teachers and understand the need for adequate lesson planning, time, and development. However, the frequent half-days have been extremely challenging. They fall right in the middle of our youngest nap time, so even though my husband works from home and is able to physically get our oldest, he is having to wake our youngest up to do so or skip her nap completely. Reducing to once a month or having four-day week once monthly would be preferred in my eyes. I support teacher development, and we can find alternative ways, alternative options during these times to keep our kids in school. This is very hard on working parents, especially single working parents. I am in full support of our teachers receiving professional development and collaboration time, but I feel it has, it would be a better use of teachers' time to have full-day opportunities for this, that will also allow families in the district to plan better for a full day off than so many half-days. This is extremely hard for working families and so disruptive to classroom learning when schedules are changing almost every other week. I believe the district is losing focus on the education and instruction of our children. Between typical early release days, days that become school holidays for sporting events and snow days, having an early release day every other week is excessive, especially for elementary students. While I am 100% supportive and understanding that teachers need these days for training, this many ER days is making it challenging for families that do not have flexible schedules. I would love to see the number of days reduced and training for longer periods. Having the kids be released earlier in the day but less frequency is causing conflicts for families. Thank you. I know everyone is eager to get that schedule, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. Up next is Nancy. Is there a friend here? Oh, not here, okay. Charlie Curtis.
I appreciate Spencer being here. I disagree with him on a lot of the facts that were presented, and I, but I appreciate him being here to articulate his position. I've been trying to understand how a school system such as Rockford with a history of excellence in so many areas can create policy so contrary to common sense and positive well-being of students. By accepting and promoting the imagination of gender theory and codifying the active suppression of parents' rights, as with the Mead family situation, it's been proven beyond a doubt that these things are happening. So I've been, you know, thinking about it, it's, my conclusions are threefold. It either has to be bribes, coercion, or bad thinking, and I'm not qualified to address bribes or coercion, but would hope that you would have the courage to resist bad policy due to pressures coming, political pressures coming from above. Because I don't see any effort to resolve the Mead case or the pornographic book issue that are requiring lawsuits to resolve, I have to believe there's a serious thinking problem resulting in bad policies RPS is embracing. Seems to be adopting Marxist tactics whose goal is to target children and remove them from parental control. Marxist doctrine tells us, quote, "The purpose of education is not the communication of knowledge, but the sharing of social experience. The education of all children, from the moment they can get along without a mother's care, shall be in state institutions," unquote. Now whether or not you understand that this philosophy has been embraced by Rockford Public Schools, with most parents totally unaware, they expect that knowledge is the goal for their children, but an entire feelings-based system has been adopted without their consent. This includes a whole range of dangerous and erroneous concepts, including gender theory, diversity, equity, and inclusion, critical race theory, social-emotional learning, uncritical environmentalism, and more, all designed to generate feelings in children rather than instill knowledge. This is the art of brainwashing, not education. Parents are not the unsafe problem here, as your policies seem to indicate. Look in the mirror. Schools have become dangerous places for some children, and parents need to better understand what's going on in order to be able to protect them. Protecting our children is very serious business, and many of us believe you are naive to the dangers they are facing and not up to the job. Allowing woke social contagion to infect Rockford Public Schools is happening on your watch and degrading education for all students. There is an emergency descending on the school district, and you seem oblivious. Seek the truth, and it will set you free.
Shannon Tanis.
My name is Shannon Tanis, and I live in Kent County. I do oversight for transparency, for government accountability. I also do oversight for FOIA and Open Meetings Act. I engaged this body regarding the incident that happened here in Rockford, and I am very appalled at the conduct from what I'm seeing or the lack thereof. At this point, an appeal hearing was requested and has not been scheduled. The multitude of FOIA violations that this body has committed and Open Meeting Act, it is very self-evident that you're being very selective and confident in your engagement. I am going to be contacting the attorney, which I already have, with a lawsuit that is currently going with the gender issue and medical records, because I think it's very important and of public interest to disclose what your secretary of the superintendent has done to alter and make public record in her favor. Not to mention that you guys don't know how to move the proper business when it's presented to you. I'm very, very appalled at everyone's conduct regarding this incident. And if you would like to engage, I would implore you to, but at this point, I advise Ms. Ritzema that she needs to file in court against this body. Thank you.
Okay. Up next is Andrea DeJ.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Matthews, and Central Office. Our building administrators, teachers, professional staff, and counselors are at the heart of our schools, interacting with our students day in and day out. This past week was National School Counselors Week. Often, our school counselors are unsung heroes in the lives of our students. They guide students through academic challenges, provide emotional support, and help them navigate the complexities of adolescence. Supporting our school counselors is an investment in the well-being of our students and our overall school environment. On Monday, there is an information night for incoming freshmen, as Dr. Amche mentioned. I appreciated getting to learn who the counselors are in that building, and that my child could hear firsthand all the resources available through their office. Thank you for your continued work in staffing our buildings with counselors and partnering with REF on programs like the Therapy Dogs and developing healthy kids. In addition to the counselors, our teachers and professional staff play a pivotal role in shaping the future of Rockford students. They go above and beyond to nurture young minds while facing diverse challenges in the classroom. Continuing to provide them with professional development opportunities, along with mentors and collaborative team time, not only enhances their effectiveness but contributes to the overall success of Rockford students. There are counselors, teachers, staff, administrators, coaches, and volunteers interacting with Rockford students every day. We need to continue Rockford's work of having an inclusive and supportive learning environment. By fostering open dialogue, promoting cultural understanding, and implementing educational initiatives to celebrate diversity, we have the opportunity to cultivate an atmosphere where every student feels valued, respected, and safe. Embracing those efforts not only enhances the educational experience at Rockford but contributes to the development of empathetic and socially conscious graduates. Working together, we can create an environment where our teachers, counselors, staff, and students thrive. Thank you.
Andrea?